That's not us.
I'd like to call this meeting to order at 2:02 PM. September 9th, the regular Board of County Commission meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Here.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone.
Present.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Present.
Thank you.
If we may all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A place known as Oga Poguay. We honor the land itself with all those who have deep connections to the land, as Santa Fe County is committed to being in relationship with the neighboring communities and all people who remain stewards of this land throughout generations. If we may have a moment of reflection and what's our, what's our, from community development.
Let us take a moment to focus, focus on the work ahead of us today. Being ever mindful of our decisions and in the best interest of our community, we take a moment of silence.
We may be seated. Our first action item, we have a difference on the agenda than we've had for a while. I hope this isn't going to throw off community members too much in how comments are made. The concern that we had action items after community concern, matters of public concern, has been a concern for some people for quite some time. And the, in the interest of assuring that people can say something about something that would be on the agenda, we've moved it up to item number two. So at this time, I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda, or, sorry, Manager Schaefer, do we have any changes to the agenda as presented?
Chair Bustamante, we do have one recommended change to the amended agenda as presented from staff, and that is to move Action Item 7G to 7A, such that it would be the first item considered under miscellaneous action items. That would be the only recommended change from staff. Other than that, I would just note for the record that the initial agenda for today's meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 3rd, and the amended agenda was posted on Friday, September 5th, which is more than 72 hours before this meeting as required by the Open Meetings Act. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Do we have any other requests, Commissioner Green?
Madam Chair, I would like to request that we take Item 11, Sub-Item 5, and move it to our next item before matters of public concern, so that we could have a brief moment to discuss an executive session.
I'd like to see if we can have that executive, keep that with executive session and just move that within the schedule in 11, and just have it the first item that we hear when we go into executive session. Would that be amenable?
Um.
Otherwise, we would have to go into matters of, I'm sorry, matters of the county attorney twice.
I was hoping to get just a brief opportunity, but if it's okay, if we can move this meeting along, I just, but yes, we, we can make it work.
Okay, so you're asking for a motion. I appreciate the consideration on going into executive session twice. You're asking to move Item 5 earlier in the agenda on matters from the county attorney.
Either, yes, either before we go into matters of public concern or immediately after, and I will defer to, if there's a second to this, to make that decision of the chair or whoever the second is, if there is a second.
Is there a motion to go, do a second to go into executive session before, or, we need to have it as a?
As a full-on motion, so I will make the motion to go on after matters of public concern, so that we can keep that in that new position.
So we have a request to change, to go into executive session, you can do this?
Chair Bustamante, of course, it's, you can entertain a motion, you can restructure the agenda, but you can also move to go into executive session on that particular item outside of Block 11 on the agenda.
Okay, so the request is to move Item 5 in executive session, matters from the county attorney, to immediately after Item 2, matters of public concern. Is there a second?
I will second that, but I would request that it actually go after Number 4. So the proclamations that we have, the reason for that is that people traveled here to be part of that.
That's friendly, that's fine.
So the motion is, we have a friendly amendment to move the Item 5 and go into executive session after Item 4, consideration of proclamations, resolutions, and recognitions.
Yes, Madam Chair.
And that is accepted by?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Green, friendly amendment by Commissioner Johnson, with agreement from Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item 5 has been moved to after Item 4.
I'd like to note that I'm opposed.
Okay, and opposed?
Aye.
We have one opposed, thank you. Okay, moving on, matters of public concern, do we have anyone online?
Chair, just a brief point of order, I believe you've had a motion to modify the agenda as presented, but I wanted to make it clear that you all had adopted the agenda otherwise.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as modified?
I will make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the agenda as modified by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we have approved the agenda, matters of public concern. Is there anyone here to speak for matters of public concern in the chambers? Daniel, do we have anyone online?
Chair Bustamante, we did have one person pre-register, Chris Michels. I did give him a call and let him know that the time of public, matters of public concern had been moved forward. I do not see him online, but I do see Sid Monroe raising his hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Would you like a timer?
We have a three-minute allowance for matters of public concern, thank you. Go ahead, Mr..
Good afternoon. Good afternoon and hello again, my name is Sid Monroe, speaking to you on behalf of the residents of Area 1B, who submitted the petition you will again discuss today in executive session. Someone asked me why the residents took the time to circulate and submit a second petition when the ordinance from the first petition was overturned in court by the city. My response was and is, because the Board of County Commissioners, you are our local government. The city has refused to engage with Area 1B for 18 years, we come before you for your help. Annexations should only occur once studies show that it will.
Excuse me, Daniel, can we pause for just a second? Um, excuse me, Sid, we can barely hear you, so I'm asking, Daniel, to stop the clock for a moment, if you can please get closer to your microphone, so that we can actually hear better what you're saying, I'm straining to hear, and I want to make sure we capture everything you're saying.
Thank you very much.
If you can just do a test?
Is this, is this any better?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you for.
I'd like to ask that we start the clock over, actually, Commissioner Kakari Stone has asked that we start over. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much for that courtesy, and good afternoon and hello again, my name is Sid Monroe, speaking on behalf of the residents of Area 1B, who submitted the petition you will again discuss today in executive session. Someone asked me why the residents took the time to circulate and submit a second petition when the ordinance from the first petition was overturned in court by the city. My response was and is, because the Board of County Commissioners, you are our local government. The city has refused to engage with Area B for 18 years, we come before you for your help. Annexations should only occur once studies show that it will enhance the quality of life for existing and future annexed residents. It is vital that a jurisdiction have a proven track record for success for its existing residents. At a minimum, studies should prove that the annexation will result in benefits that greatly outweigh any negative effects, such as traffic congestion, school overcrowding, overuse of parks and recreation facilities, taxi increases, and efficient wastewater and stormwater practices. We all know none of this is possible currently for this city. We respectfully ask that you approve an ordinance to permit Area 1B residents to exist freely as constituents of the county without continued threat and oversight by the city. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair Bustamante, there are no other users online.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to approval of meeting minutes. Do we have any questions, concerns, or changes to the August 11th, 2025 Board of County Commission Special Meeting Minutes? If there are none, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kakari Stone to approve the special meeting minutes from August 11th, 2025. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, those minutes have been approved. Item B, approval of the August 12th Special Meeting Minutes. Do we have any changes, comments, or concerns? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to accrue, approve by Commissioner Johnson, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Commissioner Kakari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, request approval of the August 13th, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes. Are there any comments, changes, or concerns? If there are none, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the August 13th Board of County Commissioners' Regular Meeting Minutes.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hank Hughes, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All the minutes have been approved, thank you. Consideration of Commissioner Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognizations, and/or other items. Our first item is request approval of a proclamation proclaiming September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month. Commissioner Camila Bustamante and Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone. And as usual, I'm grateful to be able to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we will read the proclamation. It's, it's particularly important that we recognize those who have contributed to our societies, and this is something that's a national effort, but one thing that's been really apparent is the difference between Hispanic populations all over the country, and, you know, having been in national committees and people who in Costa Rica say, well, we're not the same as the people in California. And there's something really special about where we are. So what I'm really happy about in this particular proclamation is we've really taken some time to ident, to recognize and celebrate the uniqueness of the Hispanic population of northern New Mexico. So Commissioner Kakari Stone, is there anything that you want to say about this?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante, and I appreciate you leading this proclamation. I just want to mention that this is a very explicit commitment and acknowledgement from the county with the fact that we have very diverse histories and legacies, but we have shared destinies. And those shared destinies, we can get to some of our goals as what we just saluted with the flag of unity of all peoples, if we really recognize how rich and take time to look at everyone's histories, and that the, as Commissioner Bustamante was mentioning, the people and landscape, recognizing the various mestizo-mixed cultures and traditions and honoring those. So I'll stop there, but I just want to recognize that. And we live this every day, every day when I pass the traditional village of Aguafria and other traditional landscapes in New Mexico. May we always take a moment to recognize the generations that come before us and think about continuing to educate the children on these distinct and diverse histories. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we'll start by reading the proclamation, Santa Fe County proclamation proclaiming September 15th. Whereas Americans observe Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating diverse histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors were indigenous to the Americas and also came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Africa, and Central and South America. And whereas colonists from Spain, Mexico, France, Greece, and Portugal traversed indigenous trails that formed an ancient north-to-south corridor, historically named Camino Real de Tierra Adentro, that marks the historic 1,600-mile route connecting Mexico City to San Juan Pueblo, Okeo Winge, in New Mexico. And whereas the first Hispanic Euro-Mestizo traditional communities in what is now known as Santa Fe County were established more than two and a half centuries prior to the United States occupation, which followed the 1848 Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, in which the Mexico-seeded present-day New Mexico and the United States, along with all or portions of Arizona, California, Nevada, Utah, and Colorado. And whereas northern New Mexico has been shaped by centuries of intertwined histories between traditional Hispano communities and the pueblos, including shared land, water systems, cultural exchanges, and enduring inequities. And whereas the communities of La Bahada, La Sienega, La Siena Guia, Aguafria, Analco de San Miguel, Rio Emilio, Tezuque, Cuyamonge. Análgico de San Miguel, Rio Emilio, Tezuque, Cuyamonge, Nambé, Pahuaca, Sombrío, Santa Cruz de la Cañada, Cuarteles, La Puebla, Chimayo, Rio Chiquito, Kundio, Jacona, Jaconita, El Rancho, Chupadero, Cañada de los Álamos, Los Eridios, Galisteo, and Glorietta, include structures, landmarks, interfamilial relations, and Hispanic cultural traditions that were established 250 years prior to U.S. occupancy.
And whereas the New Mexico State Legislature created legislation to recognize traditional historic communities in 1995 through New Mexico State Law established in 1978. It was updated in 2024, recognizing continuous historic settlements and mixed community land uses. And whereas Santa Fe County encompasses Spanish land grants and 55 asequias that support the indigenous definition of sustainability, quote, "healthy environment, healthy culture, healthy people," quote, through traditional agricultural practices. And whereas, protection of land and water is a trade of Hispanic cultural resilience to support life for future generations. And whereas Santa Fe County encourages residents to recognize this complex history, honor intercultural ancestral legacies, and celebrate, educate, and evolve in their Hispanic Latino slash Latina, Chicano, Chicana, Mexicano, Mexicana, Coyote, and Genisaro identity in Santa Fe County. And whereas Santa Fe County affirms its commitment to protecting asequias and traditional historic villages and communities as mixed living heritage, acknowledging Hennisaro contributions, respecting pueblo sovereignty, and integrating communal land traditions into planning and governance. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County, do hereby proclaim the month from September 15th to October 15th, 2025 as Hispanic Heritage Month, honoring the traditional communities of Santa Fe County.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second, Commissioner?
I make a motion to approve.
That was a second?
That was a second. I seconded it.
As a sponsor, I made the motion to approve. As the co-sponsor, Commissioner Kukari Stone seconded. Do we have any comments, statements before we take the vote? Commissioner Green and then Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. Honored to go first on making comments. Um, this is beautiful. Uh, it's great to encapsulate a lot of our history and, uh, and the cultural history of northern New Mexico and Santa Fe County in a proclamation such as this. Having just gone through fiestas here in Santa Fe and continuously, uh, being, seeing memorials and reminders of our cultural heritage up in the north. Uh, my district has so many different, uh, events and things that memorialize our traditional history. Having just one month seems, uh, a little small, but, you know, you gotta, you gotta define it one way or another. So, uh, here we are, and I fully support this, and I thank you two for, uh, bringing this forward.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yeah, moving here from another place in the country. I was very surprised and also enriched by the Hispanic culture here. I enjoy it so much. And I'm glad that we support it and everything that goes with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, and thank you to both of you for, uh, writing this very beautifully written proclamation. Hispanic heritage is extremely important to our present and our future in Santa Fe County. Uh, growing up in Santa Fe, I, um, you know, learned so much, um, from our multicultural community. And when I went away to college, when I, you know, moved to various places afterwards, um, the rich traditions of New Mexico brought me back. And the, and Hispanic heritage is an extremely important component. It's well worth honoring, and I fully support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we also take the vote, I want to acknowledge Enrique La Madrid and Esteban Rayel Galvez, who assisted in assuring that the history and the content was sweet, that it was perfect, that it was the way it needed to be done. So I want to make sure that I recognize them. Do we have any further statements? If not, do we, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have a new proclamation. Oh my God, I'm so happy. Okay, the next, we have Item B, request approval of a proclamation proclaiming September 9th as Ralph Anthony V. Hill Jr. Day. Commissioner Adam Johnson and Commissioner Camila Bustamante. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, before we begin, I do, uh, actually want to ask the, uh, county attorney. I had intended for the, the proclamation date to be September 15th. Would that be possible to change with a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, because that's Mr. V. Hill's birthday. I think that would be, um, and the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month. So I, I think that's a better day for him. But as long as that's okay with everyone. So, um, in lieu of reading the proclamation out, uh, I would like to, uh, request um, that, uh, a, a very dear friend of Mr. Ralph V. Hill, Garrett Veneklausen, um, approached the microphone upfront. I also want to acknowledge that, uh, Mr. V. Hill's family is here. His daughter Kayla, his mother Mary, and his father Ralph Senior. Um, if they'd like to come up to the front, they're welcome to, and if they prefer not to, I absolutely understand. Um, you know, Ralph V. Hill, uh, recently passed. He was a tireless advocate for the Pecos Wilderness for Clean Water. He was an organizer for New Mexico Wild, a former board member of the New Mexico Water Trust and, um, of the Upper Pecos Watershed Association. He was the former chair of the New Mexico Asequia Commission. And we lost an amazing person on, on May 16th. He was only 46 years old. Before I became a commissioner, I met Ralph, um, through this initiative through EcoFlight, where he invited me to go and fly over the Pecos Wilderness and see, um, the mining claims and also the, uh, the beautiful environment of that region. It was an amazing experience for someone who had never been in a little Cessna. And Ralph's knowledge of the region, his, um, obvious dedication to it and, um, knowledge of the landscape and the politics in that landscape and the threats to that, to the cultural, uh, traditions and the traditional uses and the ecosystem were very apparent to me. So when Ralph passed, uh, in May, it was a shock to us all, and I, I, um, want to recognize Mr. Veneklausen, uh, because I know that you worked very closely with Ralph. And the least that we can do is honor those in our community that stand up to huge global corporations, but also, um, protect their own and make sure that these traditional practices, that small communities aren't overrun by outsiders who are looking to make a profit, to keep our environment clean, to keep traditions intact. So, um, Mr. Veneklausen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, I just want to say a few words, and I, I love the proclamation that you just gave. And Ralph is so emblematic of so many of the narratives in that beautiful proclamation. He embodies all those things. So I, I think the conjunction of these two things is such an amazing Santa Fe sort of thing, which really makes me happy. Um, I just want to say Ralph V. Hill is a New Mexican icon. He's a New Mexican treasure. Ralph was a complex, big-hearted man who had remarkable qualities. He was an extraordinary empath, a righteous truth seeker, a selfless champion of his people and community, and a resolute champion for the greater good. He had an enviable connection to and profound understanding of the natural world and our place within the universal clockwork, clockwork of existence. Ralph would often say, "Un poquito para mí, un poquito para vos, un poquito para las criaturas de Dios." And for the gringos in the room, "A little for me, a little for you, and a little for all of God's creatures." And I love that he would always say that. Ralph was a water warrior. He loved the Pecos River dearly. He loved the Santa Fe River. He loved the Monte, the mountains. Ralph called the river and his asequia "the arteries of the mountain." He tirelessly fought to protect his beloved river and asequias and rivers and asequias statewide for the many threats that would see it degraded and destroyed. It was here where Ralph made his last stand. Ralph taught me about querencia, the love of place, of being tethered and centered to a home ground. Ralph was a champion of cultural heritage. He taught me about herencia, cultural heritage and its precious value in an ever-homogenized world. Ralph was emblematic for the word "community." He was our center. Ralph was the glue that held us all together. He was a master of convivencia, bringing communities and cultures that often didn't align and teaching them how to see the world through each other's perspectives. He was an extraordinary peacemaker, but oddly struggled to be at peace with himself. And so we carry Ralph with us in our hearts. In both our personal and professional lives, we exist now to, with an intentionality driven by the way Ralph approached life. And our lives and our communities will be a better place for it. I, for one, am committed to being more like Ralph and ensuring his legacy lives on in every aspect of my life. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Veneklausen. Very beautiful. Thank you to the family of Mr. V. Hill for joining us today. I'd like to request, in addition to, um, changing the date of the proclamation to September 15th, which is, uh, Ralph V. Hill's birthday, um, to, uh, request a copy for the family. Um, so when, when we sign the proclamation, maybe we could get two and maybe, and we could deliver one to the family. I think that would be a nice thing to do. And I want to thank Commissioner Bustamante, Chair Bustamante, for supporting me in this. I also want to acknowledge that you, uh, spearheaded, uh, our letter June 10th to the congressional delegation in support of the Pecos Watershed Protection Act, which Ralph was instrumental in. Um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you very much for bringing this forward. When we spoke about doing it closer to the day of his passing, um, there were so many things going on, and one of those that would have just dampened what we're doing today was that Senator Heinrich actually spoke to what we have all heard about Ralph V. Hill from the Senate floor. And at that time, it was, this timing is perfect. His birthday, um, having, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month. A few things that I know about Ralph, and I've known him for a little while myself. Um, I want to also welcome Mr. and Mrs. V. Hill here and Kayla, his daughter, for being here from the village of Pecos where my father rests. Ralph V. Hill was an organic intellectual, and he had deep communal knowledge. Um, the big impact from such a small town for an individual has informed land and water protection in the Colorado and Sangre de Cristo Basin. His values of being a good vecino, a good neighbor, who trusted that by taking care of the land, it would take care of the people. We build on this legacy when we take action to protect the Pecos River, as it is our responsibility to be good vecinos. So thank you very, very much for bringing this forward. Anyone else have any? Commissioner Green?
Uh, thank you, Commissioners, Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Bustamante for bringing this forward. Uh, I was only blessed with meeting Ralph once, but, uh, it was in a room full of folks, and he commanded the room even though Senator Heinrich was in the room. Everybody sort of wanted to talk to him and make sure that I got to meet him just for a moment, and, uh, it was pretty amazing. So, you know, when we talk about protecting the Pecos, I don't know what it is in the water up there, but they bank some good leaders up there because I've met so many people who care about, uh, a pretty small river that has such a great impact, and it is pretty amazing. So, um, we need to protect the Pecos because we should all drink from it and gain that wisdom. It's amazing that he had the wisdom that he had with just 46 years, right? So he was an elder to a lot of us, even though he had, was 10 years younger than I am. So that impact you can have at such a young age is, um, is really amazing. And I give a lot of credit to his parents who are here, right? You should be proud of yourselves for an amazing, amazing kid you, you created. And that child grew up to be a steward for all of us and taught us how to appreciate these rivers and these asequias and this herencia that is, um, not only from you, but for all of our culture here. Uh, and I really appreciate that. And so, uh, to Ralph Anthony V. Hill, uh, Junior, great job, and Senior and Mom, great job as well. So thank you so much.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I just want to say I don't know if I met him or not. I went to several events around the Pecos River, and I so much appreciated the energy that he built around that and everyone built around that. And I hope we continue on into the future to actually protect the river based on his, his input. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sequele Sabla.
Thank you for, uh, co-leading this proclamation. And this is just a poem and a song that we sing in temascal. And I want to just dedicate this, and I won't sing. I will not torture anybody in the chambers, but I want to give this, uh, song and poem that we do in ceremony to Señor V. Hill. Tierra mi cuerpo, agua mi sangre, aire mi aliento y fuego mi espíritu. The earth is my body, the water is my blood, the air is my breath, and the fire is my spirit. And let's honor that. We are all, and he did that so well. We are all part of the earth, so let's continue to take care of her in his name and others and ourselves. Bueno, gracias.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, if I may move to approve a proclamation honoring the life and legacy of Ralph Anthony V. Hill Jr., um, proclaiming September 15th, 2025 as Ralph Anthony V. Hill Jr. Day.
Motion to proclaim September 15th as Ralph Anthony V. Hill Jr. Day is made by Commissioner Johnson. We have a second by Commissioner Bustamante. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have September 15th as Ralph Anthony V. Hill Jr. Day. Thank you. All right. Item C. Request approval of a proclamation proclaiming September 17th as national citizen. I'm wondering if the V. Hills wouldn't mind taking a picture with the commission. And if you don't want to, that's okay. But if you'd like to, we all need a little comfort from that dog. Would, would we do that? I would be so grateful if you're, if you want to. Yes, okay, thank you. Let's do it. Okay, before we go to the consent agenda, we have another proclam-- run more proclamation. Thank you. Requesting proclamation proclaiming September 17th, 2025, as National Citizenship Day in Santa Fe, New Mexico. Commissioner Kakari Stone and Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I just want to ask and invite Zulema Chavero, Nancy Toscano, and Allegra Love to come forward. And before I introduce it, I want to give my dear colleague Commissioner, Commissioner Adam Johnson, a chance to say a few words about Citizenship Day.
Thank you, Commissioner Kakari Stone. This is a proclamation proclaiming September 17th, 2025, as National Citizenship Day in Santa Fe County. I want to thank the folks up here for their tireless efforts for the immigrant community and for undocumented folks in our community. Citizenship is an important recognition, but it, and it's important that we make citizens out of people who contribute to the United States, to our county, to our city, to our I would love to have the folks up here, if it's okay with you, Commissioner, read the proclamation. Is that what we had planned? Okay.
I'll be next after you.
Okay. And I want to thank Commissioner Kakari Stone for looping me into this important initiative. It's important to, that Santa Fe County continue to be a community that is welcoming, that protects its own, and that fights back against injustice of all kinds in, you know, a climate that is not as welcoming as we would all like. So it's important that we, as a community, are leaders in this, and I want to thank you all for your leadership because you are doing the work on the ground.
I'd like to invite Julia Montenay forward, please. And Julia is with...
And with Las Cumbres Community Services.
Excellent, excellent. So let me just recognize, Zulema Chavero is representing the Somos un Pueblo Unido. And Somos un Pueblo, I also want to recognize Marcela Diaz, who is a paisana, sister, hermana, but a fierce advocate, who's, has always rallied many, many champions, and it's about us and not just the me and leaderships about all of us. And Zulema, you being a fierce community organizer, and thank you, Somos, for reaching out to the county, actually, to co-sponsor, and I hope you're going to say something after we read the proclamation on September 17th, and all are invited, and the city of Santa Fe is also collaborating on this. Thank you, Nancy Toscano from the Connects Project for being here, and also really looking out for navigators as we look towards resources. We have a county webpage now. Thank you County Manager Schaefer and many others who have helped create that with all the resources. Many of your resources and names are on there as well. Allegra Love, being a lawyer and fierce champion, and also working with initiating and founding the Dreamers Project, correct? Yes, we've seen you at the Roundhouse as an advocate. Thank you. And thank you for joining us today for Las Cumbres, a fierce organization, really reaching out and serving all. Citizenship is important because it affects all of us, all of us at some point where immigrants and our ancestors were, became citizens, at least the majority of us. And it's a pathway not only for belonging, but for economic opportunity, educational advancement, for celebrating who you are without fear of retaliation or fear of being harmed. And I want to recognize that many of our families in Santa Fe County are in mixed-status families, which means some are citizens, some are not, some are at different stages of getting legalized status. But regardless, everyone pays taxes, and this is important that the county join. This declares that the county will also collaborate and support the Cities and Counties for Citizenship, which is a national initiative. And I know that we have clinics and naturalization clinics and tools locally. And I'm just gonna, I know Commissioner Johnson and I, we're gonna try to move this along, but because some of you came, I don't know if you have one very brief announcement. Zulema's going to read the first five in Spanish, and then from the Connect program, you're going to, Nancy, read the last in English, so we'll do it bilingually. Is there an announcement on Citizenship Day that we need to know here in the chambers from any of you?
Yes. An announcement for Citizenship Day?
Yes. Any invitation, invitadas you want to make on September 17th? You're having a day, correct?
We're having a celebration at the convention center. Somos is sponsoring, along with the city of Santa Fe and other key community partners that have worked hard with us since 2018 promoting citizenship in our city, being part of the former Cities for Citizenship, now is Cities and Counties for Citizenship, the initiative that this board is invited to be part of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And shall we go ahead and read the proclamation? I was going to ask Chair Bustamante and with the county manager, Sarah, if we could get an original copy to each of our guests here at some point, maybe after today, and we can mail it, or I could deliver it on Citizenship Day on behalf of Commissioner Johnson and I, the commission thinks. So vamos a empezar, sí?
Muchas gracias, Madam Chair, members of this board. I want to give a special thanks to Commissioner Kakari, Commissioner Johnson, for bringing this to the table. At this critical moments of our lives, it's really important, the support from our leaders and our communities. So I'm going to read the proclamation in Spanish, the first part. Proclamación del Condado de Santa Fe. Proclamación por la que se clara el 17 de septiembre de 2025 como Día Nacional de la Ciudadanía en el Condado de Santa Fe. Presentado por Lisa Kakari Stone, vicepresidenta, y Adam F. Johnson, comisionado. Considerando que en todos Estados Unidos la democracia se encuentra bajo ataque por el incremento de desinformación, la supresión del voto, y los esfuerzos para excluir a los inmigrantes y las comunidades marginadas de la participación cívica plena. Y considerando que ampliar las vías hacia la naturalización y la ciudadanía fortalece la democracia, mejora la cohesión social y promueve la prosperidad económica, asegurando que todos los residentes tengan voz al dar forma al futuro de nuestras comunidades. Y considerando es más, considerando que es más probable que los ciudadanos naturalizados sean propietarios de viviendas, establezcan residencia a largo plazo, participen en la vida cívica y aporten el crecimiento económico local y a los ingresos fiscales. Y considerando que el Condado de Santa Fe reconoce que las políticas de emigración inclusivas promueven la confianza pública, fortalecen la colaboración con las fuerzas del orden y fomentan comunidades más seguras y dinámicas. Y considerando que el 11 de febrero de 2025, la junta de comisionados del condado adoptó una resolución que afirma el acceso equitativo a servicios, dignidad para todos los residentes sin importar su condición de ciudadanía, y medidas activas para desarrollar una comunidad más abierta e inclusiva. Whereas the county celebrates the leadership of community-based organizations, including Somos un Pueblo Unido, the Dreamers Project, faith leaders and immigrant rights advocates, who have long organized, educated, and empowered immigrants and refugee families to engage fully in civic life and advance policies of dignity and inclusion. And whereas the board recognizes the efforts of the cities and counties nationwide to support citizenship through the Cities and Counties for Citizenship CC, for C, initiative, which may provide a network and resource of ideas for future initiatives by the Board of Support Citizenship. And whereas the board honors the contribution of immigrants and new citizens to our community and reaffirms the county's commitment to democracy, equity, and inclusion. And whereas the board encourages all residents, organizations, institutions, and levels of government to celebrate the value of citizenship, recognize the many contributions of immigrant and refugee communities, and promote civic participation as a foundation of a vibrant and thriving democracy.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2025, as National Citizenship Day in Santa Fe County. Thank you. And Chair Bustamante, is it okay if we take a photo for, with our reps?
Do we have to make a motion?
Oh, okay. I forgot about that part. Very exciting. I make a motion to pass the proclamation?
Second.
We have a motion to press the proclamation proclaiming September 17th, 2025, as National Citizenship Day in Santa Fe County by Commissioner Kakari Stone. We have a second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
So just, I want to thank you all, Commissioners, and everybody that works on citizenship and immigration rights, immigrant rights issues across the board. We're all, for the most part, immigrants at some level, even if we migrated across the country or married into it. My wife was an immigrant, is an immigrant, and she earned her citizenship a few years ago, and that was the most beautiful day I think I've ever seen, was 400 people down in Albuquerque at the convention center, you know, swearing an oath to this country and here by choice, right? It's the most amazing thing. Some of us are lucky by birth, some of us are lucky by choice and the opportunity, and it's beautiful, and thank you for supporting that process for everybody that comes across, that you come across. So thank you, guys, for being here and making this.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will just say thank you for bringing this forward. We are a country of immigrants, and we can't forget that. It doesn't matter how long ago. Yes, there are people whose indigenous lines go back to the land even further, but let's recognize that those of us in this chamber are also a population of immigrants. So thank you very much, and thank you for bringing this. All in favor?
Aye.
The post? Nope. We have this day. Let's take a picture. Okay, we have moved executive session, a portion of executive session, to now. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I will make a motion to go into executive session to narrowly discuss the item 11 subsection 5 from matters from the county attorney, which is potential discipline of the county manager, and that's it.
We have a motion to go into executive session from Commissioner Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Johnson. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone?
Yes.
And Chair Camilla Bustamante?
Yes.
We will be in executive session until we are no longer in executive session.
To reconvene?
I will make a motion to reconvene after our executive session stating that we only discussed the item, the narrow item that we discussed going into executive session.
Do we have?
Second.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Green, second from Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
We are back in session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Recognizing Commissioner Johnson.
So with, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Chair of the Santa Fe County Commission to identify and engage an independent third-party attorney to investigate the actions and decisions made by county management regarding denial of access to county facilities, specifically 102 Grant Avenue, by the Fiesta's Quadria or the Fiesta's Court on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. The scope to include policies for access and decision-making process for this and similar situations. Like to add additionally, the scope will include a comprehensive look at county codes and policies regarding use of county facilities by the public to ensure that we look at issues like this comprehensively.
We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to the consent agenda. And we are losing Commissioner Green at this time.
Not quite yet.
Not yet, okay, okay. The consent agenda, do we have anything that the commission would like pooled for discussion, or do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as provided?
I'll make a motion to accept the, to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion from Commissioner Green to approve the consent agenda as provided. We have a second from Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, none opposed, motion carries. I need some resolution numbers, please. Item C.
Um, D?
D, I'm sorry.
Please, okay, so Madam Chair, item 5D is 2025-093, and item 5E is 2025-094.
Thank you, 93 and 94, thank you very much. Appointments and reappointments. At this time, we will hear from Adeline for COLPAC appointments.
Thank you, good afternoon, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. My name is Adeline Murthy, I'm the Open Space and Trails Planning Team Leader, and today I am bringing forward a request for consideration of the appointment of two members to the County Open Lands, Trails and Parks Advisory Committee, or COLPAC, a District One representative and an at-large representative, as well as the reappointment of an at-large representative. COLPAC is a nine-member advisory committee to the Board on matters relating to open space trails and parks. They serve three years, three-year terms with the option of one reappointment. We currently have two vacancies on the committee due to the resignations of members Daniel Alvarado and Jenna Wildvogel, both of whom moved out of state, and they were both fantastic committee members, so it's hard to lose them. In line with the resolution that governs COLPAC, members are expected to be of diverse backgrounds and bring expertise to the committee spanning conservation, restoration, natural and cultural resources, community interests, education, trails planning and construction, hydrology, agriculture, wildlife, water, management and stewardship, public administration and finance. We advertised the two vacancies and received nine applications from District One, Thomas Dominguez, Walter Futterell, Deirdre Monroe, and Sandra Smith; from District Two, Antonio Lopez; from District Three, John Grabowska submitted an application, but he then withdrew his application after this packet had been uploaded to Board Docs; District Four, Thomas Falachenski; and from District Five, Sarah Schlinger and Nat Shipman. For the District One representative, staff would like to recommend Thomas Dominguez. He is currently the Santa Fe County Extension Agent for Agriculture, Agriculture and Natural Resources through NMSU, and his expertise in agriculture fills an important knowledge gap on the committee. There were two candidates who were very qualified, and so staff would like to recommend that the Board choose between either Deirdre Monroe or Sarah Schlinger for the at-large representative. Deirdre is a trail development and mapping expert, author of the Caja del Rio Plateau Riding, Hiking and Biking Trails Map, and the Caja Vision Plan, and an advocate of multi-use trails. Sarah Schlinger is an archaeologist and land manager who spent many years working for the Bureau of Land Management, including serving as branch chief of the Resources Division of the State Office, field manager for the TOWS Field Office, and associate manager for Grand Staircase Escalante National Monument. Regarding the reappointment, staff would like to recommend the reappointment of Steve Ferdy, who is the current COLPAC Vice Chair, and this would be his second and final term. So, thank you, and I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Adeline Murthy?
I just, I will say thank you for soliciting people, I think Tom is a great addition, we work with him in so many areas, and I think that that's a great addition to District One. I do want to, or to COLPAC, but from District One, I do want to give a thanks to Daniel Alvarado for serving for those years, and sad that Santa Fe couldn't retain a professional like that, really, when we talk about it, because of housing, right? Young professional that worked at the City of Santa Fe doing long-range planning and moved to an even more expensive place than Santa Fe, but they gave him housing. So, someday, we may learn from that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
Madam, so do we have any discussion about the two potential members for the at-large? Does anybody have a feeling one way or another, know one of these candidates?
Anyone?
Honestly, they seem both very well-qualified, so I am having a little bit of trouble, neither are from my district, so that bias won't come into play for me.
Well, I'll start with a, just to get the ball rolling, I will start with a motion to appoint Tom Dominguez to, to serve as the District One COLPAC representative.
I'll second.
I second it.
I second it. Motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Bustamante. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Tom Dominguez is District One COLPAC representative, and now to appoint either Deirdre Monroe or Sarah Schlinger as at-large representative.
Well, Adeline, do we have an archaeologist on the committee yet?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Hughes, we do, yes.
Who's, who's, who's that?
Dan Potter.
Okay. That's, I think that might help us decide.
Pardon me, I will make a motion to appoint Deirdre Monroe's application to be the at-large representative, stating just for this that she seems to have a good idea of the Caja del Rio and trails space and the Caja Vision Plan, so I think that's an important thing for a whole bunch of us.
I'll second and I'll encourage Sarah Schlinger to apply the next time there's an opening.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green for Deirdre Monroe, and a second from Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next, the reappointment of Stephen Fordy, at-large. Unless anyone objects?
No, I'll move to reappoint Stephen Fordy, he's a very good representative on the committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes, we have a motion from Commissioner Hughes to reappoint Stephen Fordy as the at-large representative, and we have a second by Commissioner Hughes, and a second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to request appointment of three members and reappointment of two members to the Santa Fe County Ethics Board. Gabe Bustos.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The Santa Fe County Ethics Board has five positions which expire, the terms expire September 12th of 2025. Staff is requesting appointment of three new members and the reappointment of two previous members to serve a two-year term from September 9th, 2025 through September 9th, 2027. Staff is recommending the appointment of Marcia McCollack, Daniel Coyne, and Eleanor Hoover, and the reappointment of Thomas Quaid and Jesse Guillen to serve on the Ethics Board for a term of September 9th, 2025 to September 9th of 2027. Now stand for any questions?
Do we have any questions for Gabriel?
No, but I do want to give a shout-out to Cliff Reeves, who did not, did not step up again. He did great work for us, and I really enjoyed working with him as an expert in this space, as well as seeing him around the legislature, and he's gonna sorely be missed, but he's gonna move on to bigger and better things that I'm excited to hear about, but just doesn't have the time for this, so.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Kakari Stone.
Yes, thanks Chair, I was, Commissioner Green beat me to the punch for recognizing Cliff Reeves as an outstanding public servant, so I just want to appreciate him, I don't think he's with us today, but I saw him over the weekend at the pet parade.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you both. Does anyone want to have any other questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Hughes?
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Marsha McCollack, Daniel Coyne, and Eleanor Hoover, and reappoint Thomas Quaid and Jesse Guillen to serve on the Ethics Board for a two-year term.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner.
It was tied.
From all the other Commissioners?
We can wrestle later in the executive session.
I'll take it.
Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you very much Gabriel. All right, miscellaneous action items. Item G has been moved to the top. Request approval of an order imposing tax rates on the net taxable value of property allocated to the appropriate governmental units within Santa Fe County for the 2025 tax year. Ms. Ereda.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the order before you today is for the imposition of property tax rates on the net taxable value of property in Santa Fe County. State statute 73833 requires the Secretary of the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration to issue a written order to the property tax mill rates for governmental entities in New Mexico. The County received the electronic version of the order on Thursday, August 28th. Included in DFA's notice were DFA's rate-setting order and the Santa Fe County 2025 tax certificate. However, errors were discovered and corrected with the help of the County Assessor's Office, resulting in a revised electronic version of the tax certificate received on September 5th. The Board's responsibility, as detailed in statute 73834, is to issue its own written order imposing the tax rates within five days of receipt of the DFA's order, which will then be delivered to the County Assessor. In preparation of today's meeting, the County is required to review the rates for accuracy. In addition, the County is required to share the tax certificate with all governmental units, including the certificate included in the certificate, so that they can also check for accuracy. The County worked with its financial advisor, RBC, to review the County's debt service rates and internally review the operational rate using the tools provided by DFA, as well as the County's economist. All taxing entities were contacted and all positively confirmed their respective rates. Within the memo today, the table of the summarized calculated mill rates by taxing entity represents the total rate, including operational and debt service rates, as applicable, imposed on the residential and non-residential taxpayer. Included as well in today's packing material is the certificate mill rate computation changed between 2025 and 2024 as exhibit E. This exhibit represents the change between the tax rates for '25 and '24 and the dollar impact to the taxpayer. For illustration, Santa Fe County residents, residential and non-residential, non-residential taxpayers will see a decrease of $8.30 and zero change respectively per $300,000 of market value of a home, i.e. an assessed value of $100,000 on the operational tax rate, while both residential classifications will see no change in property tax on the debt service tax rate, and the, as the rate is the same as last year. With that, Madam Chair, I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Ereda? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Commissioner Hughes?
Yes, I move to approve the order imposing tax rates on the net taxable value of property allocated to the appropriate government units within Santa Fe County for 2025 tax year as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes, do we have a second, Commissioner Kakari Stone?
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, back to item A. Request authorization to apply for New Mexico State Fire Protection Grants to purchase two emergency vehicles and construct three regional training structures. Chief Black.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. I'm here today before you to request authorization for the Santa Fe County Fire Department to apply for five New Mexico State Fire Protection Grants totaling $2,575,000. Altogether, these requests maximize our eligibility under these, this grant program that we're able to apply for every year. Under this year's grant structure, the State Fire Marshal's Office advised that they have received approximately $11 million less in available funding, therefore this upcoming grant cycle is going to be very competitive in nature. These applications that we are seeking to submit and request your approval for will support critical department operations by funding three regional prefabricated structures, one in the north, one in the east, one in the south, each at $500,000. These training structures will allow firefighters, both paid and volunteer, to train within their regions, which will not only reduce travel, reduce overtime, but will also assist in reducing travel time and making sure that crews are training within their areas so that we can ensure proper, effective emergency response during training activities. Furthermore, these training structures will also be constructed and utilized in conjunction with our mutual aid partners, further enhancing our collaboration with our neighboring agencies, so we'll be working with other jurisdictions as we, as we conduct training, both at our facilities as well as others. Additionally, we are seeking to apply for one fire engine for the western region, grant award would be $600,000 at that point. We need to, this would go to replace an engine that is nearing 30 years old, 30 years of age and is in need of replacement. Additionally, we are looking to replace one mini-pumper for fire administration, which would replace a regional apparatus that is also aging, and that provides, if awarded, would provide us a versatile apparatus for both fire and rescue services across the entire county. Apart of our fire administration application, we also will be applying for a recruitment-retention stipend in the amount of $25,000 that would provide a small stipend to volunteer leadership within the department, as also provide some funds for recruitment and retention of materials. With that, I stand before you for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Chief Black? Commissioner Kakari Stone?
First of all, thank you for your leadership, Chief Black. Just for the public and also for my education, what, what's involved in training structures?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Kakari Stone, so the training structures that we would be looking to purchase are very similar to what we have within our Awafriya Fire District, so that consists of prefabricated shipping containers that are designed and constructed to meet NFPA 1403 for live-fire training. So, we do conduct live-fire training, and with that, we are, we do that in conjunction with NFPA 1403 and do it as cleanly and safely as possible, only using natural materials. However, the construction of those facilities also have to meet a certain height requirement to meet ISO requirements that would allow us to achieve a facility hour training, or facility hours at that training facility. So, there's also other components of SCB mazes that you can control, change the layout of buildings, do different trainings such as rope trainings with repelling and ladder operations, and various fire training.
Yeah, that, that sounds very rigorous. I'm just curious too, and it has nothing to do, I'm very excited about you applying for this grant, thank you for seeking outside external funds, but I was just thinking about, how do people with different physical disabilities, are they, is there a platform that allows participation to be a part of firefighting?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Kakari Stone, yes, so as a combination department, we are uniquely positioned to work with any individual that has an interest in serving with the fire department. So, we have various support roles, whether they be administrative, whether they be frontline first responders, so we are actively, we are able to engage anyone who wants to volunteer and serve with the fire department and really find something that they can contribute, whether it be an administrative functions of helping process paperwork, training materials, things like that, or individuals who want to seek a little bit more active role and are able to do so through actually delivering emergency services.
I appreciate that, Chief Black, and I think this could be something maybe we could advertise because we did get the. could advertise, because we did get the disability award from advocates, and I think that's really good news. I wasn't aware of that. Maybe we could advertise it as a positive thing that the county's doing, and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else for Chief Black? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hughes to approve the recommended action for the reapplication of the grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Black. Item B, approval of memorandum of agreement number 2026-0058-5D. This is also with Chief Black. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante Commissioners. I'm here to request item 7B, to request the approval of the memorandum of agreement specifically for the fire department to work with the New Mexico Healthcare Authority for continued participation in the ambulance supplemental payment program. This MOA allows the fire department to fund the state share of the ambulance supplemental payment program in return that will receive supplemental Medicaid payments for emergency ground ambulance services provided to Medicaid beneficiaries. Historically, Medicaid reimbursement has averaged only about 24% of billed costs, and this is an opportunity to recover a more realistic cost of ambulance services, as it's already been in use in 13 states. For this specific agreement, the fiscal impact that it would have on the county is that we would upfront, we would provide the funds upfront to cover the state share contribution, which is paid in four quarterly installments. These transfers would allow the healthcare authority to draw down the federal match and send an enhanced Medicaid treatments back to us. Total payments would be $1.9 million, less the state share and the fee for the public consulting group. Santa Fe County Fire Department anticipates to see a $1.16 million net positive impact within our budget. With that, I stand before you for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Chief Black? Seeing none. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Kakari Stone?
Yes, I make a motion for approval of MOA number 2026-0058-FD with the New Mexico Healthcare Authority for the implementation of the ambulatory supplemental payment program, and to delegation of authority to the county manager to sign the purchase order.
Second.
We have a motion. There are no, there it is. Motion from Commissioner Kakari Stone, a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Black. Item C, a resolution to adopt the Santa Fe County Strategic Workforce Housing Plan.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. Today I come before you requesting approval of the resolution, the Affordable Housing Agreement Amendment, and the memorandum of understanding to implement Santa Fe County's Strategic Workforce Housing Plan, land rather phase one, a public-private initiative in collaboration with Santa Fe County, Rancho Viejo, and Santa Fe Community Housing Trust. The SWHP is designed to expand the supply of affordable rental housing for essential workers, creating long-term pathways to homeownership. If fully realized, the pilot phase could deliver more than 60 new affordable rental units and serve as a scalable model for meeting workforce housing needs across the county. This program offers a 48-month period rental, in which time, if the clients need to be made by already, if they had credit issues or anything like that, the housing trust will be working directly with them to improve any of those credit issues that they may have. Santa Fe County will be doing the upfront qualification together with Rancho Viejo and Warren Thompson, and we will be determining the rental amount. Mr. Thompson will be responsible for the lease period and the lease itself, and we will be responsible for helping him track each of those leases. We definitely recommend approval of this program, and with that, I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Benavious? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve a resolution to adopt the Santa Fe County Strategic Workforce Housing Plan, creating a memorandum of understanding between Santa Fe County, the Santa Fe Community Housing Trust, and University of Rancho Viejo LLC to develop and implement a workforce rental housing program and establish a pathway to homeownership for qualifying members of the workforce. And I also think it's a very good idea.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes. We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D.
Madam Chair, sorry, that, the resolution?
Resolution number, thank you.
7C is 2025-095.
Thank you, 095. Item D, resolution authorizing the county manager to pursue designation of a segment of Santa Fe County's El Camino Real Trail as part of the Rio Grande Trail.
Hello again, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. Growth Management and Public Works Staff is seeking or requesting authorization from the Board of County Commissioners to pursue the designation of a segment of the county-maintained El Camino Real Trail as part of the statewide Rio Grande Trail. The Rio Grande Trail is a statewide initiative led by the state of New Mexico's MNR Department and Outdoor Recreation Division to develop a long-distance trail stretching across New Mexico from Mexico to Colorado for hiking, biking, and horseback riding. Oversight of the project is provided by the Rio Grande Trail Commission. Although originally envisioned to follow the Rio Grande, portions of the trail must diverge from the river, including in the area around Santa Fe County, where obtaining authorizations from sovereign Indian nations, tribes, and pueblos is not anticipated. The specific alignment of the, sorry, the specific alignment of the trail through Santa Fe County has not yet been fully determined, but it is expected to cross Caja del Rio and then follow the Santa Fe River. So this section of trail has been identified as an important connector between the Caja and the river. It is, the length is 3.36 miles, and there's a map in Exhibit B that shows where it is exactly on the southern end. It starts at the intersection of the Santa Fe River Trail near Constellation Drive, and then it goes north past the MRC to west Caja del Oro Grand Road. The designation will not alter the trail's physical condition, alignment, public access, or county maintenance responsibilities. Instead, it will formally recognize its recreational value and may support the future installation of interpretive or wayfinding signage. And lastly, the Rio Grande Trail Commission, their next meeting is scheduled for September 19th in Taos, and at this meeting, they will review and vote on trail designations. Thank you, and I stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Adeline? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, thanks Adeline. Can you just explain, so we would still be responsible for our maintenance and other obligations? Is it a sort of co-branded, sorry to use that word, but opportunities to align with the Rio Grande Trail?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, that's, the idea is that at this point, there could be some signs that indicate that this is part of the Rio Grande Trail. The long-term vision for the trail is to establish a nonprofit arm that could then be stewards of the trail, kind of like with the Continental Divide Trail. But in the meantime, the Rio Grande Trail Commission is asking that the jurisdictions that maintain the sections of trail continue to maintain them until that nonprofit arm is created.
Okay, that makes sense. So what is the timeline for the Rio Grande Trail? And any other interesting details would be helpful, just to give us a sort of scope. We zoom out from Santa Fe County, where I understand Mexico to Colorado, but what else is envisioned with the Rio Grande Trail?
It's a great question. I'm not sure what the timeline is. It's, well, I can tell you it's going to be a multi-decadal process before the entire trail is designated. Some areas, like especially around Albuquerque and Las Cruces, have already been designated because they have existing river trails there along the Rio Grande. But in some areas, like in Santa Fe County, there might be new sections of trail that are created, and so that will take time.
Okay. Well, I think that we should do this, it seems like if other municipalities are getting on board and we are creating a, you know, New Mexico's the fifth largest state, of course, it's going to take us some time to make a trail across the whole thing, but this would be a great addition to that. And I'll make a motion to approve it.
I have a question. In any way, so my concern would be that the, I appreciate the question about co-branding. I mean, this wouldn't then just necessarily be assumed that we would be able to maintain that portion that is the Camino Real and acknowledge that the Camino Real is part of that Rio Grande Trail and not eventually lose acknowledgement of the Camino Real Trail?
Chair Bustamante, that is correct, yes. It's kind of similar to the existing portion of the river trail that is also on the Camino Real. There's signage there that indicates that it is the Camino Real.
Thank you, thank you. If you're ready.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the county manager to purchase designation of a segment of Santa Fe County's El Camino Real Trail as part of the Rio Grande Trail.
We have a motion from Commissioner Johnson. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Second from Commissioner Kakari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Adeline. Okay, resolution number?
Madam Chair, that resolution number is 2025-096.
2025-096. Item E, resolution authorizing Santa Fe County to file an application for financial assistance from the New Mexico Water Trust Board. Leandro Cordova.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good afternoon. So Santa Fe County staff seeks approval to apply to the Water Trust Board for funding to complete three wastewater projects in the Community College District. One being construction of the main wastewater line from the Oshara Phase Two proposed subdivision to the Santa Fe County wastewater treatment plan. Two would be improvements to the Avajo Lift Station, which is just south of the Santa Fe Brewing Company. And three are improvements and expansion of the wastewater treatment plant to meet the capacity, the increased capacity. County staff anticipates requesting up to $24.3 million, which is actually the max allowed under the 2026 cap. Water Trust Board requires that no one application take more than 15% of the total amount allocated, and that's $24.3 million this year. Just a little background on the Water Trust Board, it's a diverse 16-member board that recommends projects for funding from the Water Project Fund pursuant to the Water Project Finance Act. Wastewater collection, conveyance, and treatment projects are eligible for funding. The county is eligible to apply for the 2026 Water Trust Board cycle, which is facilitated through the New Mexico Finance Authority, who administers the application process on behalf of the Water Trust Board. Application deadline is September 11th, 2025, and a board-approved, authorized, and resolution is required, and which is attached. If awarded, Water Trust Board funds will leverage county funds with a 60% grant, 40% loan combination from the state. A little bit of quick background on Water Trust Board. The Water Trust Board awards are typically structured as loan-grant combinations. Then NMFA determines the required loan amount based on the applicant's historic revenues available to pay debt. Current loan requirements range from 10% to 40% of the award in 10% increments. The loan terms, 0% interest with a .25% annual administrative fee, with repayment terms matching the project's useful life. So as far as 20 years, depending on the useful life of the project. The construction period is up to 24 months, during which time only the administrative fee is due. After that period, the loan converts to a permanent loan, and the principal payments begin. And the local match. So all projects must provide a local match in addition to the required loan. Match sources may include loans from public sources. The county has money that's already been allocated to these projects that will more than meet the required match. Eligibility for match requirements is based on the applicant's median household income relative to state MHI. So the state of New Mexico had an MHI of $62,268, while Santa Fe County had an MHI of $78,731, based on 2023 U.S. Census Bureau. So that puts us in category one, which would most likely require Santa Fe County to put up a 20% match. As I mentioned earlier, the Board of County Commissioners has appropriated over $18 million to these three different projects, so we do have more than the 20% match already allocated and approved. And in terms of the loan repayment, we did have voter approval of a general obligation bond for water wastewater projects, and it was a $10 million amount specific to the wastewater treatment plant, which we would use to pledge and make repayment of the 40% loan. So at this time, I'd like to request approval of the subject resolution authorizing Santa Fe County to file an application for the financial assistance from the New Mexico Water Trust Board, and please designate the deputy county manager to represent the county on behalf of the application, and allow the county manager to accept and sign the funding if awarded. And I stand for any questions, if there are any.
Do we have any questions for Leandro? Commissioner Kakari Stone?
Yes, thank you Chair. Mr. Cordova, how competitive are these grants? Because it looks like you have two days to get it in. That's pretty quick. Or are you pretty much guaranteed?
It is a pretty competitive process. We would be competing against any other municipality, county, local tribal government, mutual domestic. We have been working on this for a few weeks, though. We were able to engage in North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, and we're utilizing one of their grant writers who have been assisting us. I also want to thank Travis Soderquist in our Utilities Division, who's really been helping our grant writer pull together all of the required applications. It is a competitive process. However, I feel confident, based on the amount of work that we've already done, in terms of preliminary engineering reports, all of our design is complete for these projects. The board has authorized money to help us already work on these, and so we're kind of ahead of the game in so many ways. It also, by combining the three projects together, we're really creating a whole lot of new capacity at the same time, and it's quite, seems like it's exactly what the Water Trust Board is looking for in terms of an application. So we're very hopeful, of course, but yes, it is a competitive process.
That's great. And when would we know we were funded?
So it is a long process for approval. They do have a couple phases upon submission of the application. They do look at all the applications. They look at a couple readiness-to-proceed items at that time, and then they recommend the next phase, which is looking at a little more diligence on the projects, going through all of our application materials. That takes us into about the January timeframe. Award is most likely to happen in April, when Water Trust Board would then say, hey, we are awarding these entities. Then there is some more due diligence and readiness-to-proceed items that are required with the county. If we are awarded, most likely receiving the actual funds maybe next September, so late next summer if we are awarded. However, we do have the ability, once awarded in April, to start seeking reimbursement from that award if we spend ahead of time. We also would be able to utilize any design monies or any of the such as a local match, even though we do have appropriated monies towards that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cordova. So you did go over this, but it kind of went over my head right away. County staff anticipates requesting up to $24.3 million, but that's just a percentage of what's anticipated, a fraction of, is that right? Could you?
Yes, so, Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, we have identified a true funding gap of about $16.5 million for all three projects. However, due to the loan subsidy, or the grant subsidy, I'm sorry, the 60% grant subsidy. However, due to the loan subsidy, or the grant subsidy, I'm sorry, the 60% grant subsidy, and based on some of the advice from the administrator of the Water Trust Board, we decided to pursue the full amount available, which potentially then could free up some of the money we allocated, either to expand the project a little bit, maybe looking at more uses for the affluent, or reallocating those funds to other much-needed projects at the county.
Okay, and then so, that's helpful, thank you. So the Water Trust Board funds will leverage county funds with a 60% grant of project costs from the state. And then, and you said there's a 40-60, 60-40 grant to loan ratio. Does that encompass the whole 24 million, or is that just the loan portion? I guess I'm a little just confused on the numbers.
So if everything worked out ideally, and we were awarded 24.3 million, 60% of that would eventually become a grant. 40% of that would then have to be committed, so roughly 10 million of that would be the loan component that we would then pledge the geo-bond capacity that we have.
Got you. So yeah, 9,600,000 is 40% of that. And then the administrative fee is on the loan portion, or is on the total grant total of 24 million? Or is it on the 10, the 9.6?
It appears to be on the total, because we do start paying the administrative fee as soon as we are awarded and start drying down funds for construction. We'll pay the admin fee until the construction loan is rolled over into a permanent loan, and then we would continue to pay the admin fee. So I believe to answer your question, it's the entire time. However, it would only be the full amount upon completion of construction.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Leandro. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Yes, I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing Santa Fe County to file an application for financial assistance from the New Mexico Water Trust Board.
And I second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kokari Stone. A second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution number?
Madam Chair, that resolution number is 2025-097.
Thank you. Okay, item F, approval of the project assignment number two, agreement number 2025-0101 DCMO between Santa Fe County and CDS Murray for Construction Administration and Management Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chair Bustamante. The Avenida del Sur West Extension and College Drive Extension Road Projects are two coordinated construction projects within the Santa Fe County Sustainable Growth Management Plan, Sustainable Development Area 1. They'll provide critical backbone infrastructure to support the growth in the area once they're constructed. Both projects have also been identified in the Santa Fe Community College District Plan, with project funding previously approved at BCC. The design of Avenida del Sur was completed by CDS Murray under the direction of Price Land Development in association with their Essencia Development. And then the design phase of College Drive was completed by Earth and Steel Design under the direction of Univest Rancho Viejo LLC in association with their Planned Elevations Development. Both road designs were just completed in this past spring. The county was involved in the review process of the design of both roads to ensure that they comply with county standards, and we've agreed to undertake the procurement and oversight of construction for these two projects. Both projects include a completely new segment of roadway that will connect to existing infrastructure, but Avenida del Sur also includes millon overlay of existing paved portion and paving of the existing unpaved roadway, which is currently Vista del Monte. The two projects were advertised as a combined IFB by the county in July of 2025 to be awarded to one contractor. This strategy allowed procurement to consolidate their efforts into one advertisement and also to elicit more competitive bids. We did have 10 contractors that attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and the county received bids from six contractors. FNF Construction Incorporated submitted the lowest and most responsive bid of $9,962,777.20, and that was for those two projects combined and exclusive of NMGRT. Both of their individual project bids were lower than the engineer's estimates, with the combined bid coming in at about 7% lower than the combined estimates. Both project engineers have reviewed the bids and have recommended FNF Construction to be awarded the contract for both of the projects. Additionally, as part of the construction phase, the county has issued two project assignments for the required engineering services, and we'll be utilizing our on-call engineering services agreement for, to CDS Murray, who is the engineer of record for the Avenida del Sur Extension Project, and Earth and Steel Design, which is the engineer of record for the College Drive Project. These assignments include Construction Administration and Construction Management Services. County staff also recommends the delegation of authority to the county manager so that the contract with the lowest bidder can be executed as soon as possible and the current construction season be maximized. I'll stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Erin? Manager Schaefer?
Chair Bustamante and Commissioners, I just wanted to preview for the board that we will be bringing forward at the end of the month, the budget adjustment resolution to formally bring into the budget both the funding that will be coming from the developer, as well as the grant funds that were provided pursuant to award from the State Transportation Commission. And then finally, making any allocations as between the two projects, so that that all lines up. But I did want to preview that for the board, that that housekeeping budget adjustment resolution would be coming forward at the last meeting of this month. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Attorney Boyd, would a motion need to include, upon the approval of the budget adjustment, approval of a bar for the funding of such project?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, I don't believe so. But you could include that as a sort of belt-and-suspender's approach.
So if I may, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners, we will be working with the contractor, assuming everything gets done by then, so that, you know, any purchase orders that are issued are structured and consistent with the currently appropriated fund. So in my opinion, respectfully, I don't think it's necessary. But I did want to give that and be transparent and upfront with the board relative to those items to come.
Very good, thank you. Any further questions, comments, concerns? I understand that this has been a long-awaited element of this project.
Yeah, there's been quite a few folks helping out on it, so.
Thank you, Erin. Seeing no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve seven F.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner.
I'll second.
We have a motion for Commissioner Johnson, a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Presentations. Presentation concerning Santa Fe County Fire Department Mutual Aid Agreements. And Chief Black is the man of the hour.
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. We'll stand by for just one moment as we get the presentations set up. All right. Good afternoon again, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. I'm here to share with you and how this Santa Fe County Fire Department is working to strengthen our emergency response across the region through working with and developing mutual aid agreements with neighboring jurisdictions. First, we'll start with talking about what mutual aid agreements are. They're in simple, or simply they're formal agreements with neighboring jurisdictions and fire and EMS agencies so that we can share resources, people, apparatus, equipment, things of that nature. They provide assistance across jurisdictional boundaries, and they really allow us to ensure a rapid and timely response, especially when resources are stretched thin. As this, as we work through these, it's really important that we build them on trust and collaboration, and it provides us an opportunity to work with our neighboring partners. Emergencies often exceed what we are able to handle on the local level, whether it be a large wildfire, whether it be increasing medical calls, or a large mass casualty incident. These mutual aid agreements allow us to work with neighboring departments to call on other resources. They reduce response gaps specifically within rural areas, where there are gaps in coverage, and it builds upon resilience through our regional cooperation, knowing what each other department has and what we can bring to the table. As we've looked to update our mutual aid agreements, we've been working through the Metro Chiefs, excuse me, let me back up just one moment. Our mutual aid agreements within Santa Fe County, we already have a legal framework to build and enter into mutual aid agreements. Ordinance 24-11 provides the authority to the county manager for us to work with county manager and neighboring jurisdictions to build and enter into those mutual aid agreements. Many of our mutual aid agreements within the fire department are outdated, and they don't necessarily align with how we respond to emergencies and what equipment that we have. So therefore, we're working to update all of our mutual aid agreements. One of the biggest things that we've been able to do is enter into the Metro Chiefs' mutual aid agreement. The Metro Chiefs Association is a group of fire chiefs that meet really kind of the central New Mexico along the Rio Grande Valley, and we meet on a quarterly basis. And they've developed the Metro Chiefs Association Mutual Aid Agreement. So we have entered into that with all of the agencies that are listed up on the screen now. So we have a framework for us to all work together and collaborate in the event of large-scale emergencies. The great thing about this is this one mutual aid agreement captures all of these agencies so that we don't have to go and enter into an agreement with each and every one of them. So this one agreement is all-encompassing. But as you notice on the screen, there's a number of agents, neighbors that are not listed there. So that's where we will be working to enter into mutual aid agreements. The packet material that was provided for this presentation does provide you with a copy of the Metro Chiefs Mutual Aid Agreement, as well as a template that we are working to take to our other neighboring agencies. So Santa Fe County Fire Staff and county legal have been working very diligently to develop a template, a draft agreement, that we can then take and enter into with other agencies, such as Rio Riba County, City of Espanola, San Miguel County, City of Moriarty, and Torrance County. So as we go and meet with the representatives of these other agencies, we can take that draft that we've already developed, use that as a template. We can work to tailor it to specific needs that they might have, or anything that they're be able to, that we're able to provide and assist. So really uses that as a foundational framework for us to build upon a mutual aid agreement for each individual jurisdiction. The benefits that we receive with Santa Fe County is that we have greater access to personnel. So we're able to call for help when we need it. And then also, not only personnel, but apparatus as well. And then we're able to take this specific apparatus that we have to other jurisdictions and help as well. Prime examples of that are water tenders when there's a large wildfires, or structure engines, or ambulances when other jurisdictions are out of ambulances. Additionally, we have aerial apparatus, so our fire engines with ladder trucks, that are ladder trucks. We can take those to neighboring jurisdictions as well and provide assistance when they, when and if they have a fire and a large high-rise, something of that nature. It also provides faster backup during larger incidents where we can automatically call for help, and it strengthens those partners with both our neighboring cities and counties. And it really enhances just the preparedness that we have as a fire department and really as a region, enabled for us to be able to respond to emergencies. The next steps that we have is we are working to finalize and implement the updated local agreements with a number of our neighboring partners. So we're at varying stages of discussion with them and working to build relationships with them. So for those other agencies that we haven't started that with, we will be identifying those and looking to reach out to them and see if they would have the appetite to enter into these mutual aid agreements so that we can assist them and they can assist us. A big thing, too, is it will help us to standardize training. So we can work with those agencies to understand how they operate. They can understand how we operate. And then that allows us to provide a much more effective response when moments matter the most. And then this really does highlight just our commitment to protect the residents of Santa Fe County and work to provide them with the strongest emergency response possible through developing a regional network. And so with that, I stand before you for any questions.
First, Chief, I want to thank you for the really good work that you've done. And you've really showed a lot of excellent leadership in building trust among the communities and, you know, really putting the county at the top of the list in our ability to respond, and I'm very, very grateful for that. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns, Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Chief Black. Let me just pull this up on my computer. This is timely and essential, so many thanks. I echo Chair Bustamante's praise. Is the, let me just get it right, yeah. So this, you may not be able to answer this, but you might have some idea. The Metro Chiefs Association is the idea that they are kind of expanding. I obviously don't know the history of the Metro Chiefs Association. You know, for us, I can see, it seems like it started in Albuquerque just based on the proximity of the departments that are involved. Like, do they anticipate San Miguel County joining soon Rio Riba? Is it an expanding organization, or is it a central New Mexico kind of hub?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Fulton Johnson. It is expanding. So it is expanding, the Metro Chiefs Association. We, as we meet, we, like I said, we meet on a quarterly basis. The invitation is open for any department that, from my understanding, who wants to come and join and participate as we work through emerging issues in fire and EMS across the state. Given different leadership turnover in other agencies, that, I believe, is part of the reason why it's not all-encompassing. But that is something that, there are individuals, departments, that are joining the Metro Chiefs Association. And then if there's any ratification of that Metro Chiefs Association Mutual Aid Agreement, we will make sure that that goes through the proper channels.
Okay, thank you. Second question is that, how are costs borne? I'm not opposed, I just am sort of curious as to like, say there's a fire and overtime, and our own department, you know, goes and provides mutual aid and incurs overtime or something like that. How are costs borne now through the different departments? Does our county reimburse another county?
So Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Fulton Johnson, that's a great question. The Metro Chiefs Association Mutual Aid Agreement and the template that we have built to take out to other jurisdictions specifically talks about cost and reimbursement. The first operational period, so really the first 24 hours, it is, falls to the agency that it's sending. So if we were to respond to a mutual aid call in, say, Torrance County, we would bear that cost. Anything beyond that 24 hours, that's where we can start looking at some sort of reimbursement. However, typically for larger incidents like that, where we're going to be sending staff outside the county, we would be coordinating with DHSEM and potentially an IMAS request where there's different funding sources and processes to that.
Okay, good. And I ask that question because I wouldn't want another entity to not call because they know that they couldn't afford it or something like that. The, I think my last question is prioritization. If there is a large fire event spanning a couple of counties, how do, how do those priorities get worked out as far as use of our own resources internally, but also calling upon mutual aid elsewhere?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Fulton Johnson, great question. So many of the agreements outline what that process is of allocating resources. For example, the mutual aid agreement with the Metro Chiefs Mutual Aid Agreement, if it's a single truck that is responding, the company officer or the fire officer of that sending region has the ability to make that call of whether or not they can send that. If it's multiple apparatus, then it goes to a chief-level officer who has a little bit bigger picture of what is going on across the county. bit better, bigger picture of what is going on, uh, across the county. Um, so we do, uh, look to prioritize, uh, sending help, but then also in understanding that, uh, we have a, a duty here to respond to emergencies here. So, um, our crews do a very good job at, uh, assessing what is happening in the county, available resources, and then sending the avail, uh, resources that we can to provide assistance.
Thank you, Chief Black.
Thank you, Commissioner Kokari Stone.
Thank you, Chair. Chief Black, I again appreciate your leadership here. In terms of thinking about multi-jurisdictional responses, where do the tribes fit in?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Kokari Stone, uh, great question. So with that, um, there are a number of, we provide, or should I say, we provide all emergency response to, uh, the pueblos, um, within Santa Fe County. So we're initial response, when it comes to things specifically, uh, like a, a wildfire that falls on tribal property, uh, we will first respond, we will make sure that, uh, we're providing, uh, adequate personnel and equipment to suppress that fire. And then we coordinate with, uh, other jurisdictions, uh, specifically, uh, the Northern Pueblo Association or potentially the Southern Pueblo Association depending on what, uh, tr, uh, pueblo that we're working with. And, uh, historically, they have had, uh, fire crews during wildfire season that we can then, uh, turn that fire over to or work in conjunction with, uh, to, to suppress that fire and contain it.
Thank you so much. And is this done through, uh, mutual agreement, anything written, or is it just, uh, good faith actions?
Commissioner Kokari Stone, that's a great question. Um, I would have to go back and find what, where are, what exactly outlines those response configurations.
Yeah, I was just thinking about the opportunity to also recruit more folks from the pueblos to be part of the volunteer firefighter or to be employed with us as a mutual, um, exchange. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. On to matters from the county manager miscellaneous updates.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and, uh, commissioners. I have, uh, two, uh, updates to the board. Uh, first, I wanted to alert the board that the Santa Fe County Fire Marshal has rescind, excuse me, Order six dot twenty-four dot twenty-five dot oh-one, uh, which had prohibited, uh, open burning, uh, within the unincorporated areas of Santa Fe County. And that was done effective, uh, today, Tuesday, September nine, twenty twenty-five. Um, you know, that's due to a variety, uh, of factors, uh, including, uh, the, uh, changing, um, wildfire risk, uh, given the moisture, uh, that has occurred and that is predicted, um, in the, uh, upcoming, uh, days and, uh, well, days, I'll leave it there. Um, in addition, uh, we are through, uh, the worst, um, traditional period, uh, relative to wildfire risk. Uh, so again, for those and, and other reasons, uh, the Fire Marshal has, uh, determined, uh, that it would be appropriate to lift, uh, the open burning, uh, ban. Uh, that means that holders of current Santa Fe County open burning permits may resume burning in accordance with those permits and new open burning permits, uh, may be applied for, um, online. Uh, obviously, um, you know, we still caution and remind residents, uh, to exercise caution when conducting open burns and to follow all applicable safety requirements and permitting procedures, uh, to include, and the Fire Marshal can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, checking with the RECC on the day of the burn to ensure that there are not red flag conditions that would otherwise nullify the permission that, that is granted. So again, there are safeguards, um, that, that remain in place. Um, secondly, I want the, uh, board, uh, to be aware, uh, that, um, we are working, uh, with the Chupadero Mutual Domestic Water Consumers Association, uh, relative to, uh, pursuing, uh, water, uh, trust fund, uh, funding, uh, for the, uh, upgrades, uh, that are otherwise necessary, uh, for that system in order for the, uh, county, uh, to move forward, uh, with the acquisition of that system and, uh, the customers of that Mutual Domestic Water Consumers Association to become, you know, county water customers. Um, as the board might recall, um, the, uh, Board of County Commissioners, not this current board, but a previous board, um, many years ago, um, had indicated a desire to, to move in that direction, uh, subject to the, uh, consummation of some conditions precedent. Um, and we've been working in good faith, uh, with the Mutual Domestic Water Consumers Association, uh, to, um, you know, uh, design and hopefully implement, uh, necessary improvements, uh, to their system. Um, toward that end, uh, the Board of County Commissioners included, um, you know, that project, um, on the list of potential projects to be funded with general obligation, um, you know, bonds, uh, which the voters approved, uh, last, uh, twenty twenty-four. Long story short, um, we've worked, uh, with the Mutual Domestic and we've encouraged them to pursue water trust board funding, uh, because, um, it would, they would qualify for, uh, much more significant, um, grant component, if not, uh, full grant, uh, for the, uh, portion that's not covered, uh, by a match. Um, in support of that, uh, they have approached, um, the county, um, too late to be put on this agenda, uh, for a, uh, letter of, of commitment, uh, relative to potentially providing, uh, matching funds, um, for their project, uh, so that we can leverage, uh, county funds in the most, um, advantageous way. I intend to submit such a letter, making clear that, um, I don't have the authority to commit to that, and that would ultimately be a Board of County Commissioners', uh, decision, uh, but that there are funds that have been, uh, budgeted generally for grant matching, uh, purposes. Um, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. Again, I'm going to be very clear, uh, in the letter, uh, that ultimately, um, any matching funds, uh, would have to be specifically authorized by the Board of County Commissioners, uh, but given the timing of, uh, their application, as was previously noted, um, I'm going to move forward in that way so that, um, they can, um, meet the, uh, threshold requirements. Um, if there is something, um, further down the road, obviously, uh, that is required and ultimately a grant would be, uh, be approved, no, excuse me, the grant, but matching funds would be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. But I just wanted to be, again, transparent with the board, um, that I plan on moving in that direction. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Matters from the county commissioners and other elected officials, we'll start with Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, just a couple of brief announcements. We, uh, rescheduled the town hall in El Dorado for October first to go over, uh, roads and trails and other projects in the El Dorado area, and that'll be at five thirty, October first. Also, next week is the Housing Summit. Um, it's a bi-annual conference that the MFA puts on and I'll be attending that. Um, and then also I forgot to mention, I should mention, I also serve on the Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee. It's not as a county commissioner, I was appointed before that, um, by the, I guess the Speaker of the House to that committee. Um, but we have, um, because of all the money moving forward, the MFA has been doing a very good job of pushing it forward, uh, with many good projects coming through and there's, um, maybe making a dent in the need for affordable housing. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kokari Stone.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Um, first I want to just recognize Latoya Ricketts, I know she's not here today, but I see Mr. Cordova back there. And, um, I participated, have been going to the monthly Camino Jacobo, one of our HUD housing neighborhoods and community, um, and Latoya has taken a very active role in listening to the residents there and making sure that the software that we're purchasing includes follow-up and tracking of issues and complaints. And I think this is a really good step move, to move forward, uh, for this community. I also want to recognize, uh, public works and, uh, the curbs have been painted, the, uh, speed bumps have been put in, signs have been put up, people feel listened and heard to. And I have to say as a consequence, I'm seeing a peak and, and some additional members from the community coming out to those meetings. They're not big, but rebuilding trust and interest as a result of action. We still have to get to the watering of the trees somehow, and I know Latoya has reached out to both of you, so, uh, thank you. Uh, just a positive announcement as we think about cuts in federal funding, the Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area just received notice yesterday that the FY twenty twenty-five grant has been awarded through, and, uh, will be funneled through the Department of Interior, so this is good news. And again, monthly participation as I do round robins and cafecitos, I go to the monthly Aguafria Village meeting and the board and the community last night. Uh, just thank you to the Sheriff's Department for providing, uh, up-to-date statistics on crime and what's going on in the village, as well as our other department that has helped them name a new road, which was a community process, and those are very positive, um, interchanges that happen. And we will continue to reach out in October to have another community meeting on the Aguafria, um, Santa Fe River, uh, meeting area outside with area surrounding residents. We have, um, the, the community very interested in contributing and planting and making it more of a community, um, feel as we move forward with those constructions. So I look forward, uh, Brian, Mr. Snyder, to working with your team on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, let's see, uh, we, Commissioners Kokari Stone, Green and myself are on the Metropolitan Planning Organization Board, we met and approved the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Um, and, uh, we will, we can request additional information in a presentation by the MPO, um, on the implications for that. But one thing that I want to mention is, that's distinct to this is that there's a philosophical ship, shift in this document, uh, that sort of guides regional planning. Um, the physi, philosophical shift, um, kind of upend certain traditional transit assumptions about parking, about transportation alternatives, about walkability and things like that. And I was very pleased to see what I would consider a, um, a smart document that thinks about transit holistically and not just car-based. Um, the North Central Regional Transit District, uh, Board Meeting was on the fifth. The, we saw a presentation on EV van efficiency on those routes, Taos being in a very efficient one, um, that, you know, is able to use its new facility and some of the charging, uh, through solar capabilities there. Um, we saw a presentation on, an upgrade to a chama facility. We, um, approved an award for a transit alternatives program, so the NCRTD while being a, a bus route also thinks about things like pedestrianism. Um, and so, uh, I, I was, I'm grateful to them for thinking outside the box and not just operating a solely a bus line, but, um, of a whole transit alternative program. We saw a New Mexico Railrunner report, um, Santa Fe County is FY twenty-five, um, ridership, ridership boarding in Santa Fe County is rebounding toward pre-COVID levels, um, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand boardings in Santa Fe County in that fiscal year, um, and the depot downtown in the rail yard, just a stone's throw from here, takes about half of those. Um, and a lot of that origination is not necessarily in Santa Fe County, but, um, actually in Bernalillo. So, uh, a lot of the workers in the county and in the city are taking transportation from Bernalillo. And finally on that, the Board of the NCRTD approved a contract with the new executive director, a, a man named Nicholas Sofol, who is the currently, or and soon to no longer be the Director of Strategic Planning in North County, uh, Transit District, which is notion side California. We interviewed Mr. Sofol, he is extremely competent and, um, though the current director is a hard person to replace, we feel like this is an excellent candidate. Um, and I am also getting married on Saturday. Thank you. So that's exciting and stressful.
That's very exciting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Um, just a, a few things, um, twenty years ago this week, um, I was at Katrina and I really want to, I'm grateful that Chief Black is still in the room and to anyone who would have a say in the leadership of this and being prepared. And I actually have to recommend the documentary that's on, um, Netflix. It really gives a good picture. I arrived on the second of September to a really ugly situation and preparedness matters. What I did, what we all noticed was that the local jurisdictions left, they had to leave. And it wasn't until General Anna Ray came in that we actually had marching orders quite, almost quite literally, that these are the places we're going to go and this is what we're going to do. Very specifically, my job was looking for hazards such as bubbling water, that means gas leaks, et cetera, looking for things that are going to be problematic as we try to respond to what was probably this country's worst impact from a hurricane. Um, to that end, I think it's important to note, um, how grateful again I am with the leadership here and knowing that there's an opportunity to catch that video and it has a lot of nuances and other things, but to just look at how response can coordinate better and making sure that you don't need to call in a lieutenant general to take things over. Um, that being said, um, the next thing, um, that I've been asked to bring up with regard to the new Teams platform not being completely accessible to people who have to upgrade their, uh, software in order to have the most, um, recent Teams accessible on their computer. And I think it's important to note that, and, and I don't know if it's not apparent on the website, but that one can access Teams through their browser as well. Can you speak to that please, Daniel?
Uh, sure, Chair Bustamante. We did get, uh, one user emailing saying that they had some issues logging into the Teams meeting this afternoon. Um, I spoke with the, the user and we tried to troubleshoot and it does seem that the operating system may be outdated. Um, I don't believe that it, it's going to require, um, an upgrade that's going to cost anything. Um, however, I do agree with you in noting on the website that you can join through a browser and I will make those changes, uh, moving forward.
Thank you very much, Daniel. And then the, um, next announcement is that there is a comment period that ends on the nineteenth of September. And the, um, in light of what we were discussing earlier and the protections that Mr. Ralph Hill had for our forest lands, the U.S. Department of Agriculture is moving to rescind the two-thousand-one roadless rule, which was a policy that protected nearly fifty-eight million acres of national forest, of which one-point-six million acres are here in New Mexico. One thing that is unique about those areas here in New Mexico is they are in our national forests where we have roadless areas and we rely on the, uh, water that comes from those forests. There are about twelve thousand acres of roadless watershed lands on the peccles. So roads going in there would, uh, have a very strong potential to affect the quality of the watershed. Um, it also, um, rescinding the rule would make it more possible for mining logging and, uh, for having impact to fragile headwaters. Um, as well, the more roads that there are within forest lands is, uh, increased the wildfires by approximately four times, um, as opposed to areas that do not have roadways. And then the wildlife habitat, many of those areas are very much corridors, um, protection, uh, they're right now protecting wildlife corridors for migration and to allow roads in there would have, um, would have an impact on that as well. Uh, taxpayers would lose, um, approximately, potentially three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand miles of, of area where these roads could possibly network. So, um, again, that comment period ends on the nineteenth of- So, um, again, that comment period ends on the 19th of September, um, and it's specific to the U.S. Department of Agriculture's rescind, rescinding of the 2001 roadless rule. The next thing that has people very excited, if you will, maybe the term "looking forward" to it's more appropriate, on the 18th, and I invite those of us on the dais who've been following this now for a little while, given the PFAS issue in the La Cienegaia area, um, on the 18th, there will be the presentation and the disclosure to community regarding the findings for, um, the study that the county has supported, and I'm very, very grateful, um, for the county stepping up and, um, serving in that role to, um, provide information and protection to community members as much as we possibly could for private landowners, and I think it'll be very, um, telling on the 18th, might be another understatement. It's information that we've all been waiting for, to find out how, where, what, those plume may or may not be given, um, that information. Commissioner, uh, Manager Schaefer, did you have any further comments that you wanted to say about that?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I just wanted, um, to, um, say to the Board that, uh, we will be providing a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners at the end of the month on that same topic, um, you know, working with the Chair. We felt it appropriate, uh, to, uh, provide them to the community of interest and meet them where they're at in the first instance, so I didn't want you to think that, um, we wouldn't be bringing that information forward to the full Board. Uh, thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you very much, Manager Schaefer. Commissioner Kakari Stone?
Yeah, Chair Bustamante, um, Attorney Boyd, I wanted to make sure, since there was a technology issue during public comment, is it appropriate, or how do we go about getting the comment that Mr. Me wanted to have but got knocked off because of not having accessibility to the technology we have? Can we read that, or how can we handle that? Because he emailed all of us, and I want to be sure it gets into the record. What's appropriate?
Chair and Commissioner Kakari Stone, um, certainly, the, the best approach for you, um, at this point in time would be for you to read the, the letter, if it's short, into the public record. Otherwise, um, the Board, I suppose, could entertain a, a motion to just enter it as, um, as something received, um, and have it be incorporated into the record that way, but I think the best thing to do is just read it as something that was sent to the Commission during the meeting.
Right now.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, right now.
Let's do that, allow it into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Attorney Boyd. So this message is from Mr. William Me. He wants to express the support of the Aguafria Village Association for the inclusion of Area 1B into the traditional historic community. He was also wanting to support and comment on the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month that Chair, Commissioner Bustamante, and I co-sponsored.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, um, anyone online for public, um, for matters from other elected officials?
No, Madam Chair, there are no other elected officials online.
Thank you. Seeing that we have no other elected officials online, we will move to the county attorney for executive session.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, um, I'm respectfully seeking a motion, uh, for the Board of County Commissioners to enter executive session to discuss threatened or pending litigation in which Santa Fe County is or may become a participant as allowed by Section 1015187 of the Open Meetings Act, and the items to be discussed are set forth in Agenda Item 11A, uh, with the exception of 11A5, which was previously moved to the beginning of today's, uh, meeting.
Uh, do we have a motion?
I move to go into executive session to discuss the, uh, matters that, um, Walker Boyd mentioned.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes. We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
We need a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll, roll call vote. Thank you again.
Okay, Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green? Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone?
Yes.
And Chair Camilla Bustamante?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will be adjourned until further.
Are only those that were listed on the agenda and that we made no decisions.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Johnson to come out of executive session. No items were discussed other than the items that were noticed. And we have a second from Commissioner Kokari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
We are out of executive session. Attorney Boyd?
Thank you Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. As discussed in closed session and as set forth in the agenda, I am seeking a commission approval to enter into two settlement agreements resolving the county's claims against Purdue Pharma and various secondary opioid manufacturers who are identified in the two resolutions, I mean in the second resolution that's been put before you. So I'm gonna take each resolution one at a time. I'm seeking a resolution authorizing Santa Fe County to enter into settlement agreements with opioid defendants and authorizing the county manager to execute on behalf of the county all documents necessary or proper to effectuate the county's participation in the settlement agreements and that is with Purdue Pharma.
And I so move. Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes for the settlement with that Pharma folk?
Purdue Pharma.
Purdue Pharma, my apologies, I can't find it in the document, but Purdue Pharma, thank you very much. From Commissioner Hughes and a second from Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the second resolution again is involving settlement agreements with various secondary manufacturers, generic manufacturers of opioid, prescription opioids and resolving the county's claims against those secondary manufacturers. I am asking for the board to entertain a motion to authorize Santa Fe County to enter into settlement agreements with secondary opioid manufacturers and authorizing the county manager to execute on behalf of the county all documents necessary or proper to effectuate the county's participation in the settlement agreements.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Motion for Commissioner Johnson, a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
And can we have resolution numbers please?
Yes Madam Chair. Item 11C is resolution number 2025-098 and item 11D is 2025-099.
Thank you. Any concluding business?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, my apologies.
One more motion?
One more motion, my apologies.
I move that we grant the county manager and county attorney authority to make demand and initiate a lawsuit for breaches of joint powers agreement against a municipality. Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner Johnson to grant the county manager authority to address...
To make demand.
Demand and initiate a joint lawsuit for breaches of joint powers agreement.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That I believe is everything. Concluding business, any announcements? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.